Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October twenty-second meeting of the Titusville's Planning and Zoning Commission. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, please, Lori.
Chairman Atton.
Here.
Vice Chairman Childs.
Here.
Secretary Grant.
Here.
Member Fason.
Here.
Member Garad. Member Scully.
Here.
Member Gallin.
Here.
Alternate member Seidler.
Here.
Alternate member Troutman.
Here.
We do have a quorum. With that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of October eighth. Does anyone on the commission have any comments or changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously.
We do not have a city attorney present this evening, but I will be happy to provide the quasi judicial procedures.
Thank you for volunteering.
Kristi Anderson, Senior Planner. During the public hearing portion of this meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained herein. These cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Those speaking in favor of their request will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on this item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council staff, representatives, and such other representatives as authorized by the council or commission. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you decide for the commission to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. Please confirm the following. City clerk, have all persons wishing to speak before the commission signed an oath card?
Yes.
Is there anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item? If so, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes.
Have any commission members visited the site or spoken to any members of the public regarding an item to be reviewed?
No.
In the event that a member has received, well, I don't think I need to read that, but in the event that a member has received expertise communication, verbal or written, the identity of the person whom the communication took place and the subject of communication must be disclosed, including opinions, facts, discussed. Any written communication must be made part of the record. Site visits must also be disclosed.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is petitions and requests from the public present. This is our first of two opportunities for anyone here to speak. You do not have to fill out a card for this if you've got anything to speak about that's not an agenda item. Anyone? Sure.
My name is Stan Johnston, and I'm not very popular. Would you hand out that pink thing? What this is about is that today I went to a church breakfast. And at the church breakfast, we had a time for talking about what we're supposed to do and our prayer requests and prayers satisfied. So I had some prayers satisfied. I had eye surgery, very successful, and I went to the doctor about my feet. I know some of y'all have been watching me just waddle around sometimes with a cane. That's a good thing. I also had a prayer request. I was requesting for help in my mission to oppose city corruption in the area of engineering. And I'm in the area of engineering, registered civilian sheriff. Did everyone get a pink card? Okay. And there's some, I don't get paid for this, and it's disappointing that I have to, well, actually, what you guys are seeing is a lot of horrible things. One of the things I put on this card is water flows downhill. It's a serious matter. The city violates repeatedly, again and again and again. How does the city do it? The city has built dams. They don't show what the dam floods, and they take private property against the Constitution. City has firm apps done, FEMA apps done. They know they're wrong, and so what do they do? They destroy them. If you don't believe they're not there, ask the city for nineteen eighty-nine firm apps, which cover a lot of projects here in the city Titusville. Another thing is the nineteen sixty-six Stormwater Master Plan. It says that we're supposed to have easements and maintenance of drainage to the outfalls, which are outside of the county limits. We have a big thing that says that. It's supposed to be done. It's not done. Numerous ditches are blocked. You can see them. I've reported them to the city. No response. As far as I'm concerned is that I think that we should get rid of some of the council members, four out of five of them, for what they're doing. You know, and how do they get rid of it? I'm a professional engineer. You will have no professional engineer oppose what I say because they now know it's taken through the board. So you have people like this person, other people, non-professionals, saying that I'm wrong. No professional engineers. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on the agenda. We have no old business. Under new business, we have item nine A, staff.
Good evening. This is small-scale amendment, application number two dash twenty twenty-four, State Road four oh five and Singleton Avenue, PD South. This application may look familiar to some of you. It was presented to this commission on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, however, was subsequently withdrawn at the city council hearing. The proposal that you're hearing, that you're being presented today remains unchanged with the exception of an updated traffic study provided on one forty-one of your packets and a stormwater and floodplain due diligence memo provided on page two ninety-four. At that time, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the comp plan amendment unanimously, and the rezoning and master plan was approved by a vote of four to three with the following recommended conditions: building height no greater than forty feet, and number two, allow the Forest Hill Baptist Church to access their property, to access their proposed driveway at Singleton Avenue intersection if possible. As an update, on October nineteenth, the Forest Hill Baptist Church sent an email, which I believe was forwarded to you in support of gaining a cross-access between the applicant's property and the driveway to the church parking lot. Some of the reasons for denial at that time were due to flooding concerns, the proposed residential density, and low water pressure. A hard copy of the revised rezoning ordinance has been provided to you. Errors were found after the packets were sent out. Changes include references to sketch plat process, which is, we no longer have due to state law changes. And then also, the minimum lot width of twenty feet was also added to the standards. That is consistent with the master plan. Out of abundance of caution, I just wanted to add that in there to make sure there wasn't going to be any discrepancies because if a standard is not listed, it will revert to the R-two standards, which is a minimum of twenty-four feet, which would not be consistent with their master plan. So they're basically just revisions and scripner error corrections. The applicant is requesting to amend the property to the city's low-density residential and conservation future land use designations and rezone to the planned development PD zoning district with master plan. The applicant is requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with a rezoning on approximately sixty-six point four nine acres for purposes of constructing a townhome community with residential amenities. It would consist of sixty-two individually platted townhome units. The parcels are vacant woodlands and currently have future land use designations of low-density residential and conservation and have general use and open space recreational zoning designations. The sixty-six point four nine acre property includes approximately fifty point six nine acres of wetlands and has approximately fifteen point seven acres of developable land in which five point five acres of parks and open space are proposed. The development has been designed to preserve the existing wetland areas and proposes no wetland impacts. The proposed PD ordinance limits uses on the property to sixty-two townhomes with a minimum living area of eight hundred square feet with supporting infrastructure, site improvements, including vehicular access, sidewalks, landscaping, utilities, onsite stormwater management facilities, and common recreational amenities. The proposed master plan has been provided on page sixty-one of your packets. City utilities are available to serve the property, and the preliminary concurrency assessment found sufficient capacity for the proposed development and will not exceed the standard level of service. Staff has found that the comprehensive plan, future land use, small-scale map amendment is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the South Street Small Area Plan. The rezoning, master plan, and conditions of approval are consistent with the proposed land use amendment, the city's comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. Staff recommends the approval of the comprehensive plan, future map amendment, and PD rezoning with master plan with the following conditions of approval as described in the rezoning ordinance. One, being a final recreational plan shall be submitted with the sketch plat that illustrates the proposed recreational amenities, including interconnected stabilized sidewalks, walking trails within the open space area, and conforms with the minimum required open space acreage. Number two, wetlands, one, two, and three, and wetland buffer shall be preserved with the submittal of the plat. The developer shall work with the city to adjust the layout of the master plan to achieve the preservation of upland scrubs, pines, and oaks where feasible. Heritage trees should, to the extent possible, be preserved with the submittal of the plat. Number four, buildings may be relocated or rearranged outside of the required landscape buffers within the area identified as a developable acreage, as stated in condition one point seven of the ordinance and as illustrated in the master plan, exhibit B. And then final, number five, direct impacts to wetlands will require an amendment to the planned development ordinance and master plan, which would require the applicant coming back to you to revise the master plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have from staff at this time.
All right, I'll bring it back to the commission. Anyone up here have any comments or questions of staff before we open the public hearing and hear from the applicant? Member Grant.
Could you tell me a little bit more about this access extension that the Forest Hills Baptist Church is requesting?
Yes, so their existing driveway is offset from north Singleton.
Right.
So, once they install the new access point for this development, it will be very close to their existing driveway.
Okay.
So, eliminating an access point off of four oh five and creating a cross-access from the church parking lot to the applicant's driveway and eliminating the driveway for the church.
The applicant agrees with this?
They have offered no objections to this.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Childs.
The memorandum about the stormwater and floodplain due diligence, it doesn't seem very, like, specific. It seems like it just kind of goes over what our comprehensive plan and land use regulations require. But would the full plan of that be on the site plan, the master or whatever, the final?
Yes, all of the stormwater engineering will be required for the site plan. The memorandum, I believe, was provided by the applicant to kind of provide additional information to the general public for the project at this stage on what they will be up against when they have to submit for mitigation and all of the other regulatory agencies that they'll have to go through to achieve the stormwater on the project.
Because there's not, like, a full plan right now, so, right?
Correct. I believe the applicant can probably provide you with additional information.
Okay, thank you.
Member Seidler.
Thank you. I read that reclaimed water service is not available in this area. Is that?
That is correct. So if the applicant chose to use potable water, it would be very expensive. They could explore utilizing wells possibly to irrigate the landscaping.
Have they offered an alternate method of irrigation or anything of that nature?
Not at this time, but they might have additional information regarding some strategies for that.
Okay, and so the burden of the irrigation, then, if it's the potable water that comes from the city of Titusville?
That's correct.
Okay.
And they are, I think, believe on a different fee schedule. I just know it's very expensive, so typically they avoid irrigation with the potable water. So typically wells and things are explored for that purpose.
Okay. I have a few questions, so if everybody else is done, can I just keep going? Okay, thank you. There's also, there wasn't a market demand analysis on this. One was not provided. So how was eight hundred square feet determined to be in demand?
That is correct. One was not provided by the applicant. The eight hundred is a minimum square footage for our residential multifamily. And the applicant may speak on their, you know, proposed plan on how they would like to move forward with, you know, the availability of the specific type of unit that they're going to provide in the square footage based on market demands through their analysis that they have done, but they have not provided one to the city.
So have we looked at the market demand? So these are eight hundred square feet townhomes that are connected. So the market demand right now in Titusville?
That would be the minimum, so they could exceed that if needed.
Okay, and then one other thing until everyone starts speaking. About seventy-six percent of this site is conservative land, wetland.
Mm-hmm.
And once it's developed, the responsibility of maintaining this wetland and all the preservation, that falls on to the homeowners association?
Yes, that would be correct.
That's what this says. So do we have a cost analysis? How much does it cost to maintain a wetland? Is there a plan that we hand or that the developer hands to the HOA that tells them, and do they budget for this, or is this?
I do not have that information.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Member Fason.
Hi. I remember this property from before, and I think that they had, one of the buildings was shorter than the others. There was one on the end was shorter. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that they're proposing lot widths minimum of twenty feet, and some of them are thirty feet. And I believe that the... Correct.
But building heights. I think they had one that on the end was shorter.
I believe that they're proposing a maximum building height of fifty feet. I don't recall seeing...
Because I guess because what my question was going to be was what's different between this and what they proposed from before, and that's what I was...
There's no change to that. So the only change is that they have submitted an updated traffic study. This traffic study previously included both of the projects. They had proposed another project across four oh five, and the traffic study had included both. So in addition to the time that has elapsed, they also revised the traffic study to include this project only. In addition to that due diligence memo that was provided, but they have not made any changes to the proposed plans or configurations of the townhomes.
Thank you.
Member Seidler.
Thank you. There was also reference to some flooding in a neighborhood or surrounding areas. Have we looked into that flooding, or is there any remediation that was, it was referred to in this study?
I mean, the applicant is probably better at speaking on that, but they are aware of the issues that have been brought up previously.
All right, anyone have anything else before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and our first card, Lori?
Would be the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Anna Long. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Dean Mead, located in Orlando, Florida, four twenty South Orange Avenue, Suite seven hundred. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Along with me is the applicant representative, the developer representative, rather, as well as our engineering team. We have the project engineer here, a stormwater engineer, and a traffic engineer. So the last time we were before you, there were some issues here raised that have all been addressed, and that was your recommendations before we went to the city council, excuse me, city commission. And at that meeting, additional conditions were going to be placed. There was some significant opposition from some of the residents, and those included wanting a more robust answer as to the traffic issues. At that point in time, we had not completed thoroughly that traffic study. That has been done. We have that information. We presented it to the folks at a community meeting. Additionally, stormwater was of concern. We requested and received, and there's copies that will be handed out by the lead engineer from the Water Management District, the process for determining what the retention must be before and after, and how that will be met during the permitting process, or the project won't be permitted. So that's addressed as well. And then finally, one of the questions was of density, and sixty-six were the number of the townhomes. At that time, it's down to sixty-two. The setbacks have all been maintained in answer to the question over here as to, once the development is turned over to the HOA, then how are those wetlands maintained? The wetlands have to be maintained in accordance with the permit, and that happens with the stormwater system as well. So part of the dues that are paid by those that live in subdivisions or locations in which there are wetlands, if there's ongoing active maintenance, then that's where that money comes from. But typically, wetlands that are set aside in preservation are maintained simply by staying away from them. They're posted with signage, do not encroach. You can't go in and mow them. You can't impact them with any type of development beyond what was asked for and approved during the permitting process. So at this time, I would respectfully request time to remain for us to answer any questions that might come up from yourselves or the general public might raise when they're up here. And if that's okay with you, then in order of time, respecting yours, I'd like to allow for the engineers to come up. Yes? Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Kyle Cosby. I'm a civil engineer for the project. I'm a professional engineer and licensed in Florida. I work with Kimberly Horn, and I'm a representative of the applicant for this matter. My office address is seven three four one, Office Park Place, Melbourne, Florida. I've got a short presentation I want to go over with you guys about this project. What I'm going to do is just going to give you a brief overview of the project, highlight some of the projects, and then we'll go talk about stormwater and then traffic because those are the main concerns that you guys had and the public had, the last to go around. So why are we here? We're seeking approval to basically rearrange the existing, to rearrange the existing land use that are already set on the property. The property has a land use designation of low-density residential and conservation. We're rearranging that land use, and then we're rezoning to a planned development. All right, so this is the plan. This is the master plan for the project. The subject property is located south of State Road four or five in Singleton. We're proposing two drive connections. The west one, we're aligning with Singleton, and then there's the east one shown there. We're proposing sixty-two townhome units. And as you can see here, the majority of the site is a wetland. Majority of the site is wetland area. The project's overall site is sixty-six and a half acres. We basically have a developable acreage of fifteen plus or minus. And we are not touching the wetlands on site. We're keeping them intact and preserved. So all that white that you see besides in the middle, that's the church property, but you can see the wetland. Those are the wetlands identified. So this project's going to have sixty-two townhome units and associated infrastructure, the boring stuff like stormwater, utilities, but it's also going to have proposed amenities, recreational amenities. It's going to have outdoor workout equipment, a tot lot. It's going to have walking trails with benches overlooking the conservation areas, just to name a few. All right, so the project meets and exceeds the city's PD code requirements. The project is, again, I want to reiterate, we're just keeping the existing land use designations. We're just rearranging it and actually benefiting and increasing the conservation area that's being dedicated. So the project results in a net increase of about ten acres of conservation to be dedicated in the land use. We're not proposing any on-site wetland impacts. And... And then now we're going to talk about stormwater. I'm going to have my colleague Karen come up here to speak about the stormwater. And I'm going to pass out packets that we got from St. John's River Water Management District that Anna referenced earlier in her presentation.
Excuse me, quick question.
Yes.
Did you say that you are with Kimberly Horn?
Kimberly Horn, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, of course.
I have a question first. How would you address the request from Forest Hills Baptist Church about the access?
The cross-access. To grant it. We're going to grant the cross-access for our drive to allow them to...
Exactly, how would, could you show, is it possible you could show us how that would, where that would be?
Yeah. So we don't have their property shown, but there will be a portion, there'll be a cross-access easement on that west drive that they can connect to.
Okay.
On that west drive that they can connect to, and they'll have access to utilize that for access to the site, to their site and out of their site.
And that would satisfy their concerns? And that would satisfy their concerns?
Yes, that provides them with the cross access.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And when we approved this before we put a condition of forty feet on, but you're doing, the code says fifty. Do you know what the building height of what you're going to be building there is? Does it exceed the forty feet?
I don't have any information on the height. I know that we've set the maximum height based on code and but we are agreeable for to the forty foot.
You're agreeable to the forty, okay, great, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Karen Toyfer. I'm the stormwater engineer on the project. And I'll go over the preliminary design of the stormwater network for the proposed project. So as Kyle and Anna referred to earlier, we listened to the concerns of the residents of existing flooding. And we provided a memo to the city explaining the existing drainage patterns in the area to show what's, that we have the understanding of what's going on in the wetlands right now. The low-lying areas and how our proposed development will detain the stormwater runoff on site in order to not impact the existing drainage patterns. So our preliminary design, because it is very preliminary at this moment, is based on routing the, all the stormwater runoff from the proposed development to the dry detention ponds, which are actually sitting on a ridge. So we are not affecting the existing storage of the area. Like Kyle mentioned, the wetlands are not being touched and that's actually what's serving as the main floodplain storage for the surrounding basin and the surrounding area. So our preliminary design is based on complying with the requirements of St. John's River Water Management District and the city of Titusville and the county as applicable. So as you can see on this slide, I know there's a lot of words on there. But what it's basically saying is it's referring to the exact municipal code and St. John's River Water Management manual that we have to comply with and follow. The letter that Kyle just passed out is from the district itself. And it in general refers to the requirements that I will talk about a little bit more that we have to comply with. So the slide also says that we are required to submit the drainage report. I think it was mentioned earlier, we are required to submit a drainage report to both the city and the St. John's River Water Management District to show that our analysis and our design comply with their requirements. They then have the ability to review, provide comments. And we respond to those comments before any approval for permits is addressed. So these next two sites go into the actual requirements. So this one focuses on the city of Titusville requirements. And you'll see overlap between this and the St. John's River Water Management requirements. As stated in the letter, they focus on requiring that the the total volume, the peak discharge rate and the water quality that we may discharge from the site does not impact any of the existing drainage patterns or the existing water quality. And we have to comply by that. So you can see here, it talks about the specific storm events that we have to design for and to maintain that existing, like I said, volume and peak discharge from existing conditions in order to not impact the existing drainage patterns that we included in that memo. That last bullet point is about the water quality. So treatment requirement saying that we can't exceed the rate of pollutant discharge from existing conditions. This then goes into the St. John's River Water Management District requirements, which are similar. So it talks about not exceeding the peak rate of discharge for the twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm. And then specific basin criteria for the ten year and twenty-five year frequency storms. Are there any questions on that?
Yes.
Member Faeson.
All right, so I saw the twenty-five year, twenty-four hour and then the one hundred year, twenty-five, twenty-four hour. Then I seen a ten year and a twenty-five year frequency. All right, so in relative terms as far as recently, right? So when is the last time we've had a twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm? So that we saw that the residence knows what that looks like. So when is the last time that we've had a twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm that we can say, okay, this hurricane or that storm there produced this much water?
I don't have that specific information of like when that occurred. But the twenty-five year storm has a twenty-five percent chance of happening each year, probability wise. So a hundred year has a one percent chance of happening. It doesn't mean it's going to happen once, it doesn't, it's just a probability based on historical data patterns that.
Yes, so the reason why I ask that question is because we've had it, right? So we've had these twenty-four, twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storms. We've also had in our lifetime, even though it's a one percent chance, right? We've had it, a one hundred year, twenty-four hour storm. And so those are just numbers, right? But to people, that's an actual real life thing that happens. And then that water comes in and then becomes water intrusion, which becomes mold and it causes a problem. So without knowing, kind of having an idea of what that looks like, when you build it and then you tell me, hey, this can hold it and then next year we have it and then it does it, then that's a problem. And so the question was what kind of storm does that look like? That's why I asked that question, what's it look like, right? And then... And I don't want to say that you guys aren't going to build it because I know that you will. I have all the faith in the world that you're going to build to hold that water. But the problem comes in is when it doesn't. And there's going to come a time that it won't. And then when it doesn't and it won't, it's going to impact people's homes.
Yes, so we go by the requirements. So we, like you said, we will design for what's required. If that's the twenty-five year storm, we base it off of that historical data and data locally from the district and from NOAA, which is a little bit more national, but also localized to ensure that we're getting the most updated data to size it to that. When a bigger storm arises, we still have, you know, protection, like design. Like for example, if it's going to, if we're designing the spillway of the pond, the point is to be like, okay, if this is, if this will overflow, we have it controlled. We know where it's going, where that overflow is going. We're not sending it out to the road, for example. And we have that wetland area. But the point is that we are meeting the requirements from the district and the city. And that's what our design has to meet in order to get a permit.
And I understand and I do appreciate meeting the design. And I guess the other part of what I was kind of thinking, right? Is that if you guys have retention pond, let's say that's five feet. A five-foot retention pond will meet a one hundred year, twenty-four hour storm, right? And you say, you know what, for these people, we're going to make it seven feet. It's two extra feet and it gives them just a little bit of extra that we understand what you guys are going through. And we've met the standard because sometimes we can meet the standard or we can also exceed the standard. And I think that kind of makes residents feel a little bit better when we just simply just go a little bit above what the standard is.
Yes, and there's also free board requirements and we can look into that capacity analysis. Because it's preliminary, we have like separated out the area that we know we will need for that. That doesn't mean that we just looked at the area, you know, specifically for the twenty-five year storm. There's a chance to have that additional free board as.
And again, we can't make that mandatory, right? We cannot, you know what I'm saying? But I'm just saying, but for the residents, they may like the fact that you guys thought about them in that little, in that little bit of a way.
Yep, we also do a deep analysis when the design step comes and we look at all of that and, you know, what makes sense in order to to meet the requirements and like where we can exceed them.
All right, thank you.
Member Chauvin.
Yeah, to kind of, piggyback off Mr. Faeson here. My background is inspections and industrial inspections and things of that nature. So my biggest concerns are the water retention ponds. You have on here a elevator station, I believe, right?
A sorry, what?
I'm sorry?
Lift station?
Like an elevator station, right? For, is that, that's mainly used for like water and pumping that out? Wastewater, okay, so it's for wastewater. Okay, then that changes that then. What redundancies do we have on this wastewater elevator station? So I know that normally you show out like your plan of the wastewater, the piping. Any, if any discharge would come out of that, like how y'all are retaining that? Do y'all have anything showing that?
So the lift station's got to be, lift station's got to be, got to be set to finish floor now. So a hundred years, seventy-two, zero discharge basin drop.
Yeah, I was just saying.
So the lift station is going to be determined based on the finished floor. Our lift station has to be at least a minimum finished floor elevation. We don't want the lift station flood, obviously, right?
Right, exactly. I've seen lift stations flood and that's why I'm curious how, where we're at with that. I don't see any drawings or anything on that lift station and how that's going to be built yet. I assume that's in the engineering.
Correct, that's going to be in the engineering packet after the stage. Once you get through this process, that's when we submit detailed plans and drawings and lift station calculations and show you where that elevation is going to be at.
Okay, and then also still to piggyback off of Mr. Faeson, the water retention ponds. Do y'all have any kind of visuals that show that water of if it were to overflow, where it would go? Anything of that nature, like directions that, like it's going to impact people or? So so that we can see where that's going, so we know where to mitigate, I guess, those areas. Mr. Faeson's, like two extra feet or so, whatever.
Yeah, so on, at the end of the presentation, there's a couple exhibits. In those exhibits, there's a pre-development stormwater analysis shows where the flow goes and then shows post-development where the flow is going to go, just high level.
And I know that's on our presentation, I assume, is that available for the public so that they can see all these flow?
Correct, yep, it's been submitted, this presentation's been submitted to the city, so it's all public record.
One quick thing on that. So the point here is, like I said, the requirement is to not exceed any of the existing volume, the peak discharge rate, all of that. So when we are designing these ponds, it's capturing that additional runoff from that impervious area that we may be providing due to the new road or sidewalks or anything like that. So because they overflow at some point and some sort, in some high intensity storm that the requirements don't include, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't always mean that it's additional water to what would be in existing conditions because we are still detaining that original volume.
Vice Chairman Childs.
I was in a meeting recently with state rep Chase Tremont and he was getting, you know, just questioned over and over about flooding. And he used to be a city council member in Volusia County. And one of the things he said was, you know, it used to be that we didn't really build storm ponds and we didn't really take into consideration when the older houses were built. So just to the south of your development are houses that were built in the fifties. And I started thinking about this when he said that, you know, thinking like, well, he said, you know, the new developments, they have to capture all the water that's, that drops on their property. That's what they're responsible for. And I thought, you know, that kind of made sense. But then, you know, when you're, when you've had a house that's been there since nineteen fifty something and the water, when they built, of course, they built some impervious, you know, things on the property. But they built it and it was probably dry, you know, back then, they didn't, you know, you don't transform the area that much. So besides putting impervious stuff on there. So they, they're used to, you know, over seventy-five years, seventy-eight years of the water going from their development over into where you're going to build. And so my question is, and my concern is then, I think it's still a responsibility of whoever's building something new that's been, you know, next to a property for so long that you've taken into consideration the water that you're getting from other properties already. So is, does your plan take that into consideration? That the water that you're getting, that's coming from other properties onto your property now?
Yes, so one of the requirements in that district letter is to consider all of that offsite water runoff coming in. So in existing conditions, if that's something that is coming in and being gathered in that area, we have to analyze that in our, in like our detailed analysis models. And basically, we examine existing conditions and the existing conditions discharge rate and volume and whatever its realistic characteristic is currently. So we look at offsite basin, if it's getting any runoff from the road, for example. It's, it is placed on a ridge, so it might not, you know, it's not the main storage area of that, of that area. But we definitely look at everything surrounding that. That's not something that we want to miss because, yeah, we want to make sure that we're accounting for the water that's passing through as well in our analysis. And then in proposed conditions, we're still looking at the realistic existing condition and making sure that the proposed is not impacting that.
So that's something that you will be doing or that's something you have done already?
We will be doing.
We will be doing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Member Faeson.
And last question, so because I hate to kind of beat this horse up a little bit. And you did a great job of explaining holding that water and then even if it does have some overflow, that it shouldn't be at a rate greater than what it would be without that retention. And so my question would be, are there any other low impact development that you guys are doing to kind of help the areas that aren't ponds? So like, like, you know, pervious roadways or or something in the ground? I don't know what kind of techniques developers can use to assist in other groundwater being absorbed outside of those retention ponds, just to kind of help alleviate because you guys are surrounded by wetlands. And so there's not a lot of water that can go that way. And it's not a whole lot that can even soak into the ground where you're at. But every little bit helps because of the, as you've mentioned, the impervious structures that's going to be there. So have you guys thought about it or is that even part of it? Or just build retention ponds and let that be that and keep moving?
It's something that it does happen in more detailed design, the evaluation of whether that makes sense. You know, pervious pavement doesn't always work. So that is something we look at and I believe the city has an LID manual that we can refer to as well. But that that goes into when we're in more detailed design.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Manny Rodriguez, also with Kimberly Horn. I am the traffic engineer. So going to talk a little bit about the transportation impact analysis or most commonly known TIA. Just want to start off by, it's been a couple of years since the, that previous study that included the north and the south. So we need to use the latest and greatest counts. So we, if it's longer than a year, we need to redo the TIA. That's the reason we need to, we kind of redid the TIA. And to start off, it was performed in accordance with city guidelines and also FDOT standards as well, being a stable four or five, right? We need to meet FDOT criteria when we analyze the study. The TIA includes two main things. The first one is the small scale future land use amendment, looking at the traffic impact, the change of that land use. And also the capacity and intersection analysis, right? Looking at if the segment can hold the traffic and also how the intersections are operating. Before we start this process, we met with staff, had some methodology discussion, making sure they were all in agreement with the steps that we're going to take, very consistent with the previous TIA, so not a whole lot of changes. And the TIA has been reviewed by staff and all the comments have been addressed as well. I do want to point out, again, being on a state road, DOT would review our TIA. They will be making any requirements, if any, based on our findings, right? So we'll get kind of double review from the city, both an FDOT. And tugging on the first item, right, the future land use amendment. We compare the existing future land use destination with its LDR, which currently allows for the hundred and sixty-four unit units. And the proposed PUD, it's capped at sixty-two. So overall, there's a reduction in the trip generation potential of the site, right? If we want to go to the numbers on the PMP call, we're reducing the number of trips that it could generate by a hundred and twenty, right? So from a future land use perspective, it's a, it's positive, right? That's what we want. We want it to reduce less trips, less impact, that's good. So there's really no, no change and there's no additional impact as a result of the, of the change in use. And the second option, second analysis, right, the capacity intersection analysis. We look at the segments, we took new counts. We include the background volume or any future developments in the area. The north parcel is included in the future volumes that we generated. And all the segments and intersections do operate within their acceptable, where, do operate within the level of service. So they do not exceed that level of service standard based on their guidelines. And same with the, its capacity, right? It's operating below its capacity. So the volumes that we're anticipating in the future by 2028, they don't exceed. So the volumes that we're, uh, anticipating in the future by twenty twenty-eight, uh, they don't exceed that capacity, right? So what, we're well below the capacity, uh, for both the intersections and the segments. In addition to the intersections, we also looked, uh, the need for turn lanes at our two project driveways. We looked at the FD, we use the FDOT, uh, uh, standards and thresholds, uh, the NCHRP report forty-five seven. A little bit technical there, but, uh, based on the volume that's on four oh five and entering the site, those turn lanes are not warranted. There, we don't, we don't need those left turns, uh, to enter our site yet, yet, based on, based on the volumes. And, and that's really a summary, uh, uh, from the, the TIA. But overall, there are no deficiencies, there's no impact, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Member Faesong.
Based on the volume of this four-way stop that you guys are gonna create, there's no need for a turn lane. Did I, did I hear that correctly?
For the project driveway, uh, turn lanes going in, uh, that is correct.
Okay.
So we dedicate it right, dedicate it left, we don't meet that threshold to install a, a turn lane.
Correct, so that's coming into the property off of four oh five.
Into the property, correct.
And so what we're saying is, and so my point was, at this four-way cross, where there is a, already a turn lane going left, going up, going, going, going north, right? Which your property's gonna be going south. And you're saying that there's no need for a turn lane to go south into your property?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Um, have you been to that, that intersection that you plan on proposing?
I am familiar with the area, um, yes, I actually worked on the city's, uh, multimodal master plan back in the day.
That's another question I'm gonna ask later on, I'm glad you brought it up. Okay, and, and you've had done a new traffic study post the construction that's on there now. In addition to whatever future construction that they're extending down that four oh five. And so there's still no need for a turn lane.
That, that is correct, uh, we are aware that, that there are some plans to widening four oh five. But our understanding is that that's still in the planning phase and there's really no, no, it's not in design or construction yet. So that, that, we don't know when that might happen, um, but, um, we know that by twenty twenty, it's, it's not anticipated to be constructed, right? So by project buildout, we don't, we don't foresee the need for turn lanes going into our site.
Well, maybe from, I don't know, maybe just for me, from a safety perspective, that seems very unsafe.
I, I, I understand, uh, your concern and we, we looked at the volume, so, and to put some numbers, there is no movement, um, we're not adding no more than ten vehicles per hour at any given movement at the intersections that we're analyzing. So our sixty-two dwelling unit, uh, development only generates, uh, thirty-four trips in the PMP hour, right? So when we assign those trips to the driveways, we see either nine or left coming into our site, right? So within an hour, uh, you're, you're seeing very little trips coming into our site.
Well, no, so, so my thought process is, as, as a car is going to make a left-hand turn, people usually hit the gas pedal right after that point. And in front of that car making a left-hand turn, going, going north, is a car now slowing down, making a right-hand turn, that the car that's behind, the one behind it didn't see coming. And as he hits his gas pedal to zoom around that car making that left-hand turn, smack right into that car making that right-hand turn on your property that you say that you didn't foresee happening.
Right, so, no, I, 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 I understand your concern and DOT would also look at our driveway and if they believe that a turn lane is needed, uh, we can install it. There's actually space out there to put a left turn lane, is, uh, it's just pavement marking. So i- in the event if FDOT requires us to put a left turn lane, that, that would be a fairly straightforward solution.
Well, I, I hope for the safety of your future residents, right? 'Cause I know that you guys just wanna build a building and get out of there, right? But for the people that's gonna live there, hopefully for their safety, you may consider that this particular intersection, after putting a four-way stop there, may need a turn lane at least left into the property. We can't make you do it, but I mean, just kinda think about the safety of the people making that turn at that intersection.
Understood. Oh, and to clarify, it, it won't be a four-way stop?
I didn't say four-way stop, I said four-way intersection.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I thought you said four-way stop. Which makes it even more dangerous than I have a turn lane, know what I mean? It's a four-way intersection of people flying down that road on a curve with a turn and you're not giving your residents a turn lane because you say the volume of, of numbers of trips doesn't warrant it. But yet, we're not talking about the safety of the people on the road that are gonna be going in and out of that property that you just built. And you're saying that their safety doesn't warrant a turn lane, that bothers me. Does it make sense to you? I mean, imagine if you were the one in that, making that right-hand turn and there's some idiot like me, I'm the idiot, right, it's me, somebody turned, I had this big old truck make this left-hand turn and I shoot on the gas pedal and I smack you and your family. 'Cause I was driving like, I was driving like an idiot and because you didn't put a turn lane there.
No, I, I understand, yeah, I, we'll, 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 we'll take that into account for sure.
Okay. But, but, but since you mentioned working, and, and this is for staff, um, again, another Kimberly Horn product, um, how many of, how, how many of these regulations that pertain to this property has Kimberly Horn worked on?
I can't, I can't answer that question.
That would be interesting to know, you know what I mean? Like, Kimberly Horn, as, as, as a consultant to the city of Titusville, has worked on a number of our, of our, of our regulations and yet here we are, 'cause one of the, the overwhelming themes that I'm hearing right now is it meets the regulation. And as a former military man, I really hate that, right? 'Cause that's just the minimum, right? We've met the minimum standard, wow, we've met the minimum standard. And I keep hearing it over and over and over again, that I, that we meet the regulation. Well, it's the regulation that Kimberly Horn also had a hand in writing. And my resident of city of Titusville has to live under these regulations that benefit not them. But I appreciate you, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, uh, I've got a question and whether you answer or staff. Should DOT decide that there should be a turn lane there? I, I've looked and like you say, it's just a paint, it's, when they did the construction within the past couple years, they widened that intersection and, and what would, where the turn lane would be is just a bunch of yellow lines where it's, you know, blocked off or a, a painted median, whatever you wanna call it. So putting a turn lane in there is a fairly simple thing, just removing that paint and, and changing the line scheme. Is that a DOT decision and is it done by expense of DOT or is that the developer or how's that work?
That would be the DOT that's there right away, they would be permitting that.
So the, and they'll make the decision whether it's necessary or not?
Correct.
All right, is that to conclude your applicant's part of the presentation? I think we're done with our questions up here.
I guess I just wanted to make, before the public does come up, I wanted to make you all aware that all of the exhibits that were in your packet or are being shared or have been shared and the information here this evening was showed at a community meeting with all of those in attendance. We offered for anyone in attendance to provide their email and then the report from the community meeting that's required to be submitted to city staff was also offered to be shared with them as well.
I have a, I have a housekeeping thing for you. On your, on the application and actually throughout a lot of this stuff, there's a weird, there's a weird mistake that's, that happens over and over. The Singleton Avenue Forty-four Acre Trust, it says that it's an LLC, but it's not an LLC, it's just, it's just a land trust. And the, it looks like the LLC that's in care of Esquire Trustee Service is an LLC. But over and over, like on lots of the documents, it says Singleton Avenue Forty-four Acre Trust LLC, which it is not an LLC, um, which is actually, you know, against, uh, Florida statute to, to represent it as an LLC.
I will make sure that we go through all of the documents and correct them as they need to be and before we get to the next phase.
And then one of the, one of them has, uh, New York as the state instead of Florida. But I'm just, it's just, it was, I was just looking at the LLC thing and I was looking at, just doing some random stuff and I noticed that it wasn't LLC and then I noticed the other, uh, state thing, but, uh-
I got it, thank you for catching that for us, I apologize. Anything else? Thank you.
I would ask real quick, uh, I guess with, with your question, uh, for staff, what does that change? If, if information on the application's wrong or anything of that nature, how does that go?
I would need to review the, the issues. I, I do know that this was approved by the city attorney, um, not our current city attorney, but our previous. And I do believe, um, I did have a separate discussion with the attorney regarding this because it was a little confusing, um, but I'll, I'll have to take a look, um, and see what the discrepancies actually were, regarding the LLC versus the trust.
I guess that'd be now questioned back to us or staff, is that something that we sit here and, and, um, I guess we still go forward with this or is the application a? I'm just asking, that's just an asking question, sorry.
Yeah, I, I would think if the city attorney hasn't had any objection, it's not, not our place to deal with it right now.
I can definitely have it taken a look at and provided to the, the new city attorney for, for opinion as well.
Great, thank you.
Member Sidler.
Thank you. And the market context, um, when we were looking at the surrounding neighborhoods, including Country Club Heights, Forest Hills Estates and Serrano Point, those were in the packet that you sent us. And can I get clarification on what, did these neighborhoods include, um, any units similar in size or to form? Is what's being proposed, because a lot of them are single-family homes, they're, um, built a little bit differently. Do they have similar buildings in these neighborhoods?
I believe most of the adjacent subdivisions are single-family detached. However, I believe, um, some of the, uh, neighbor, the neighborhood for, um, not sure which, but there are, uh, manufactured housing as well within proximity.
Do we have a price point on these yet?
It would have to, um, provide that information.
It's too early in the process to provide that kind of information, to have even explored it, so it'll be whatever the market will bear. And the effort is to ensure that it's going to be something that's going to be attractive to the citizens of the area, so. It doesn't make sense to build a product that you then can't turn around and sell.
Did you have any more questions? Great, thank you. Uh, Laurie, we have any cards from the public?
Yes, Jill Dobson. Is this material someone's? Who says this?
Uh, for the AV group, I'd gotten a message that, um, the stream is still showing the PowerPoint. It's not showing the cameras. There we go, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right. My name's Jill Dobson, I, uh, live here in Titusville. My husband and I own the adjacent twenty-five acres of land that includes the lake to the south boundary of the proposed PD South development and borders wetlands to the west. Our property is designated conservation, as is most of the PD South and most of the open properties in this wetland-rich area. According to the Future Land Use Element Comprehensive Plan Policy 114-8, negative impacts of the residential land uses on environmentally sensitive areas shall be minimized. In Titusville, conservation areas are environmentally sensitive areas. Please reference the aerial photo of the lake and the pictures of the flooding that were provided to you. So everyone here should have those now, I'll be speaking to them. My concerns are the negative impacts that the proposed PD South will have on the environmentally sensitive areas. Destruction of large areas of old-growth oak forest, the treat, the threat of flooding in existing single-family residential properties in Country Club Heights and Whispering Hills neighborhoods, which already experienced flooding. The proposed development master plan, Exhibit B site, places multifamily buildings fifty feet tall, a hundred and feet wide, near the lake and, and a detention pond ten to twenty feet of, near the lake's edge. On a hill, at, or a ridge, on a hill that is twenty-five feet above the surface of the lake. Constructing on this area will be increasing runoff, causing erosion and directly across from single-family homes, affecting water levels and water quality in the sensitive areas. Further, a public health concern and safety concern, the conversation lake, conservation lake and its west and east canals shown in the picture, look above the word "conservation" at the top and the bottom of the lake, there are canals there. Those canals and the surrounding designated wetlands and some other lakes are part of a flood control system stretching from Park Avenue and Heritage Drive through our property, bordering multiple neighborhoods to the east and into downtown Titusville. The site plan also indicates a sewer lift station very near the bank of the western canal of the lake. If this station fails, contamination will flow into the flood system that I just discussed, potentially impacting a significant area of Titusville. According to the, uh, thirty-three dash five plan development standards, applications of PD zoning shall have the burden of demonstrating the proposed PD zoning standards wi- and will protect health, safety, welfare and general public to a greater extent. May I continue?
Uh, how much longer do you have?
Probably one minute.
Go ahead.
Uh, to a greater extent than would have been possible pursuant to the standard zoning, uh, uh, set forth in the state, in the statute, in the article. In conclusion, reference page fourteen of the staff report. The zoning review criteria, number seven, substantial reasons why the property cannot be used in the existing zoning district. The staff comments, the current zoning limits, the allowable density to a maximum of sixteen single-family homes, residential units. There are no substantial reasons why the property cannot be used in the existing zoning districts of general use and open recreation zoning. SSA two twenty-four requests small-scale amendment and rezoning should be denied, not approved. Retain the existing zoning, reduce the sixty-two units to align to the GU zoning, delay the decision to change this land use and zoning until after ongoing DEP feasibility study. The vulnerability study results are available for decision-making.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the extra time.
Anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Member Childs?
So you said that they could go ahead and use the current zoning to build what they want?
Sixteen units.
For sixteen units?
Not what they want.
I, I thought you said sixty, I was like, that's weird. No, it's fine, it's okay, no, it's sixteen, okay, thank you.
And may I also offer, you had some questions that I think this might clarify, it is in your package. Am I able to keep speaking for a minute? Or, or less?
Yes, go ahead.
This is in your package. And what I think is happening is we're talking all past each other a bit. There is a lot of area that you're familiar with and I think others are. And so this is from Kimberly Horn, this is in your package. There's areas here that are not just within this boundary, which is what the review has been addressing so far. That doesn't consider the areas of the neighborhoods built in the nineteen fifties, the wetlands that exist. These are our last significant wetlands. Our drainage systems were designed to help those neighborhoods when they were built, to keep them safe. And that all needs to be looked together rather than trying to assume that the water and the boundaries of this property line are, are somehow monuments that we cannot assess the entire impact to this large area. So there's a large lake, this lake in the picture, there's- So there's a large lake, this lake in the picture, there's drainage canals, there's wetlands, there's everything out there. It's a wilderness right now, if you will. There is no traffic. There is no light. There is no sound. There, it's, it's quiet and it's, it's a, it's a open area just like the zoning says, to be passed on to our future residents.
So you, you also gave us pictures of the flooding. So it's flooding right now?
It is.
Is there something that?
It's not a hun- I'm sorry, go ahead.
Was, when it was built, I don't, I don't know, was that pond, I don't know if you know this or not. But was that lake or that private lake, was it supposed to be for the stormwater?
It was.
And if so, then has it been flooding for a long time or what, what's, what's wrong with the current situation?
I've lived on the property forty years, so what I've experienced, I can share. The design of the system was there. The land was built. Things were done to, uh, continue the growth of that area where it could be built. Over time, the infrastructure has aged seventy years in some cases. So as those aging infrastructures interact again with the bigger environment, it's not just the lake or the, the, the drainage canals that were designed. It's all of that together. The, the infrastructure, the amount of rain, when we get rain, how intense it is. These are not hundred-year or twenty-five-years pictures. I'm showing you this week. So you'll see that there is a number. It's not just in my neighborhood. That description I said on down across Park Avenue into downtown Titusville, those neighborhoods to the east are experiencing significant water now, just from summer rains or events that we have. So not being just to the standard of developing within that boundary line of the PD South, really, I, I, I really wish we could look at that and implement this whole approach that would give you a much better systemic view of what's happening as developments like this occur. Because the results are down the road, like we see seventy years ago. Everybody intended to do well, but as infrastructure ages and conditions change, you have to somehow model to that or predict to that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Member Fason.
Any other questions?
So, you know, just last week or just in our last meeting, you know, we had that, that, that report that said that the city of Titusville can, can hold more folks. And that report was done by who? Okay. So, so, so there's that. So the question for this, for staff. Is there a regulation that, that states how far a lift station can be from freshwater?
I personally don't have that information, but I have a feeling that there are standards, uh, for that issue.
Cause she brings up a really good point and, and we don't want to have a failure, right? And then we have raw sewage going into our water, into our waterways. Titusville has already had their problem quite a bit. And the potential of putting a lift station right next to freshwater, I think, kind of can create a problem.
Um, I do know that, that the proposed master plan and the location of the lift station was reviewed by engineering and they offered no, uh, issues with the proposed location, so.
And, uh, it's cause the only other thought, the only other problem that I have was that property that built, um, Garden Street in west of ninety-five, where they proposed a retention pond in one location. Then they moved the retention pond to a different location, thereby causing a ton of flooding, um, as you exit ninety-five. You know what I mean? And so they can say one thing, but as we've seen in a property that's already built, they moved it. Not with city approval, not with, and, and then now they cause future, future problems. And the other, and the only last thing I have to say is, and again, I don't know, and I'm sure that they've planned for this, right? According to the regulation written by whoever, um, that a property isn't supposed to let, runoff isn't supposed to leave their property, correct?
That's correct.
It's supposed to stay within the, the bounds of their property. But again, I don't know if they've done that. Because if anything should leave that property, go into that lake, it's just gonna exacerbate a problem that we already have. But anyways, just wanted to put on, be on the record that I've said it, you know, that, that we want people that's gonna take care of our community and not exacerbate problems.
Another card, Lori.
Kay Saintage. Kay Saintage, Titusville. According to staff report, page thirty-one of your packet, plan development review criteria to be considered by you includes external compatibility B. Quote, "The proposed development shall not negatively impact any adjacent conservation land." I'm going to read that again. "The proposed development shall not negatively impact any adjacent conservation land." Immediately adjacent to the proposed development is a twenty-five acre parcel designated conservation land with a four acre lake. You have been provided an aerial photograph of the PD South site and the adjacent large lake to the south. Another aerial photo is on page one twenty-nine of your packet. One afternoon recently, I had the privilege of viewing this beautiful pristine lake on conservation land. I was absolutely amazed with this lovely six-foot-deep four-acre lake. Currently, huge trees line this lake's northern side. My concern is that the construction of the townhomes and particularly the retention pond to the north of this large lake will degrade this lake on conservation land and may lead to algae blooms. Eleven homes on overlooked terrace have frontage on this lovely lake. Today, when they look from their homes across this lake, they see nothing but huge trees. These residents treasure this lake and its adjacent woodlands. This will all change with the building of PD South. While the required buffer may retain a few trees, nothing will hide the large retention pond and the forty-foot-tall townhomes immediately to the north of this lake. Again, plan development review criteria says, quote, "The proposed development shall not negatively impact any adjacent conservation land." Don't you think it likely that the proposed development will negatively impact the four-acre lake on adjacent conservation land as well as eleven residences on this lake? Recommend denial of this SSA and rezoning request. Do not let this proposed development negatively impact the adjacent conservation land. Preserve the uplands around this huge wetland area. Keep this all intact to benefit the residents, wildlife, aquifers and the lagoon. Thank you. Any questions?
Member Child? I'm sorry, Member Fason.
No, he can go first.
I was, I have a question for Christie though on this, on her point of where it says not negatively impact any adjacent conservation lands. And the staff comment doesn't, it, it just addresses wetlands, um, and not conservation, which I, I know wetlands are conservation, but it says no conservation lands, but the comment's just about wetlands. Is there, is there a reason why it wasn't addressing the whole, any conservation land? You see what I'm saying?
I mean, the, the wetlands were seen as conservation lands, um.
So they're synonymous? They're synonymous? Is that what you're saying? That they go, they're interchangeable?
Not necessarily. I mean, th- there could be ti- different types of conservation lands. However, in the analysis, it was seen as it, it's not going to, I mean, they are preserving seventy-six percent uh, of the subject site of wetlands. So they're proposing no wetland impacts. Um, they're not, they're not permitted to impact adjacent lands that are off of their property. So that would in effect not impact the surrounding properties.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, sorry.
It was just weird because it's like, like she said.
I think they were being analyzed kind of as the same, um, in, in the report.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's any other types of conservation lands except for, I think you had wetlands, the obvious wetlands, and then you have things that kind of, well, the area around it that drains into the wetlands, so. But, um, I don't know if they're always technically wetlands, but still, um, okay, thank you.
Member Fason.
Yeah, this is for the engineer, for, for Kimberly Horn. So the question, uh, or even for the water person. So how far should a lift station be from a body of water in the state of Florida?
Um, I, I first off want to just put on the record, is it Mr. Fason? I would be very cautious of how you address my company in, in other situations that are not on this item. Um, it's sounding very disparaging to the company. So I just want to vi- advise against, against moving forward in that direction.
Thank you. So how far should a, a lift station be from a body of water?
Depends on the body of water. Right, the lift station's gonna be at minute, minimum inlet, which is gonna be minimum finished floor elevation. So basically, your, your lift station's gonna be at or right at your finished floor of the buildings. So there's no risk, there's limited risk for it to flood out, right? Now, I know that lift stations in the past have overtopped with severe storm events that have occurred, right? But, and I know you hate the word regulations and we have rules to, that govern us and that we have to stand by. If you have problems with the legislation, you need to talk to your, your city council.
My question is how far from a body of water should a lift station be? That's the question. Not how high, how far?
I don't have that information right now.
Okay, so a quick Google search says seventy-five feet. State of Florida says that a, that a lift station should be seventy-five feet from a body of water. So my question to you now is, is your current lift station within that seventy-five foot perimeter? And again, it could be wrong. We're just asking, I'm just asking. So is your current lift station right now within that seventy-five feet? Approximately.
I would have, I would have to look at it. I would have to look at it. I would say that, again, this is, this is, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here, guys. Like, we have, this is for a comp plan or rezoning amendment. And I wanna, I wanna thank Christie and her team. There's a lot of effort that goes, that gets put into this process before this project gets presented to you guys at this moment. But we still have a long process to go. We still have to engineer the site, right? So what you see now could change. Could change once you guys see it again during the preliminary site plan review. Density could decrease. So that stormwater pond could get bigger. Once we do that analysis, lift station can move, alright? So all I'm saying is that we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. Um, and this is just for the approval of the, of the comp plan amendment and the rezoning.
I know. So, so we do this every week. Um, so you're not the first time to come before us. And we ask lots of questions. Do you know why we do that? So we do that because our residents demand that of us. And each of us volunteer our times here. And we come up here to speak on behalf of those residents who we speak for, you know what I mean? So they not, they may not agree with me, they may not agree with him, but we speak for our residents because they're not, they're not here. And very often, organizations, not just yours, but many, come into this city and get things passed through. And all of a sudden, the people that suffer aren't the ones that make the money and leave. It's the ones that stay here and live and live through it, sir. So sometimes they're hard questions. And we do that for the residents of the city. I was born and raised here. I love this place. Now, I'm sorry if you feel that I'm attacking, but I'm not, okay? But I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of the city of Titusville to make sure that what you leave behind is a great product for everyone. You understand?
Yeah, and, and guess what? Our team is licensed professionals. We will make sure that what we leave behind meets the design intent.
Not everybody does that. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not here to guess your intention, right? But I can tell you that not everyone's here to do that. Not everyone. Okay? And so that happens a lot here. And so, because I don't know you, I don't know anyone, I don't know any of y'all. I've never talked to any of y'all, right? What I do know is that when you leave, I'll still be here. Understand?
Yeah, and, and that's my plans that I stamp. So if there's any issues, it's my name on the line as engineer record. So I take a level of responsibility as well and a, a level of confidence and integrity in my design. Same with my team. We all, like I said, there's a lot of work that goes into this. There's a lot of technical things that need to happen. Like I said, staff has their input. This is a long process. We're only on the beginning portion of it. We still have a long way to go. Alright, I'm telling you that if you guys have some faith in us, when we come back, we're guys, we're gonna have all this stuff dressed out and hashed out.
So, so, so when you're on this side, I do not have to have faith in you, not at all, right? You have to present a product that is good for this community. I don't, so, so having faith in you could ruin this city.
The product that we put for, for you right here meets all the code guidelines that your city sets. It meets the guidelines.
Okay. And again, I'm here to ask questions, okay?
Yep, I'm here to answer. Thank you. Any other questions?
Member Galen.
Alright, so my question is, I think maybe for staff, um, it's about the flooding. Um, what is our process right now for when the road in that neighborhood floods like this? What, what, how does it deflood, if that's a word?
I mean, it depends on certain situations, I, I suppose. Uh, I know Public Works does go out sometimes when there's flooding and they have VAT trucks and things like that. But I, I guess it would depend on the type of flooding and, and how it happens.
So with what the residents propose or what they're saying, and then of course what the applicant is saying, once this new developit, development is made or created, this potentially could get worse? Would it not get worse?
I mean, the, the proposed development can't be any more, uh, you know, impactful on the, the environment that it already is regarding the stormwater. So, um, in essence, I think it, it would likely be improved. But I, I. Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Member Sidlin.
Thank you. I'm looking at page sixty-one of our agenda packet. And it has the little, the squares here. And I'm looking at the wetland buffers. We have an average. Now, if we change the zoning, if we approve the zoning, then we're approving, is that we're decreasing the buffer from the wetland from fifty to what is the minimum and?
So the wetland buffers, I believe, are, are standard requirements for St. John's. So any, any type of development within proximity of a wetland is required to provide a minimum buffer requirement.
Right, but when, what we have now, what it's zoned for now, are we at, what, fifty feet for a buffer from the?
It would be the, if they were developed as property of single-family homes, sixteen single-family homes, which would likely encompass the same land area, if not more. Um, they would have to meet the same landscape buffer or the, the same buffer requirements.
Right, but if it's single-family homes, then that, what are we, we are zoned for sixteen, so it would fit. And I think the zoning is fifty feet. But if we change this zoning, and I'm looking at this particular thing and it's an average of twenty-five feet wetland buffer, we have some that are, the building, what is that? Southeast is less than twenty-five feet from the wetland buffer. There's a couple areas that are less than the twenty-five feet. So I'm asking, I guess, when we change from what we have now, excuse me, and it's a, uh, we are counting on the square footage or the feet to be the buffer. And we're decreasing that now and putting the building there, what is protecting the wetlands when we're decreasing that buffer? Are we, is it the plaque that we're putting out there? Is it the walkway that's protecting that wetlands? When we decrease the, that from, from the protecting, I'm.
I'm, I'm, so what, the, the decrease, what are you referencing?
When we change from one zone to another, we're asked to change from what we are now.
I think she may be combining setbacks and, and buffers. I think she's combining the two or conflating the two.
Okay.
So explain the difference between a setback and a buffer and how they're, and how they're different.
So, so there are landscape buffer requirements, um, through our code, um, for, for shielding and buffering, um, like, uh, along the roadways and in between developments. Um, and then there are lan- uh, wetland buffers that are required for stormwater management through the St. John's. Um, building setbacks, uh, are measured from property lines to, to proposed building constructions. So those are, uh, minimum distances that buildings can be built from, from property lines.
And when we're in a conservation, budding up to a conservation property, what is that?
So, so what she's saying is that no matter what, right? So there's gonna be a twenty-five foot buffer of wetlands. So twenty-five foot from the wetland until your property line where it starts, you, you have to re- reserve or preserve that twenty-five foot. Then from that line to your building becomes your setbacks, okay? And so for a single-family home, from, from that line to the building is fifty feet. And then now, because this, these multifamily homes, it can only be, it can be twenty-five foot from that property line, that's twenty-five foot from the wetlands, from there to the building. So that twenty-five foot for the wetlands is gonna always be there, no matter the type of building that's ever built. Okay? And so the, so you, do you see on your, on your, on your page there, those, those dotted lines? That becomes a property line from there to the buildings or whatever. That be- That becomes the marker of where you start counting the feet to the building. Make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Next card, Lori.
Vicki Conklin.
Good evening, Vicki Conklin, Titusville. I would request denial of this application. There's no reason why this property cannot be used in the existing zoning. The existing zoning allows sixteen single-family units. It can be built on, it can be used, that's the current zoning. The requested is for sixty-two. They call them townhomes, I call them tiny homes, they're eight hundred square feet. Um, the architecture is not consistent with the existing homes. In these tiny homes that they're proposing, there's a twenty-foot lot line. So there's a combination of between four and six attached with a common wall. That's kind of a new concept that we don't really have here so much. Um, eight hundred square feet, fifty feet high it can be, that's really tall. And, uh, the units, as they say, are, they're attached with the common walls. The backyard and the setbacks, I would really like for you to pay attention to those. Because ten feet, ten feet is what the backyard is. And I wanna show you how much that is, because it's not much. It's equivalent to six of those chairs in a row. And so, this is all. If I measure it from here, that's, that's their backyard, right there. That's their backyard. And I don't know that people want to move here and have a backyard that's ten feet. Do any of you have a backyard that's ten feet? You can't even hardly put a patio back there or do anything. And that's right by the wetlands. So I think that needs to be considered as well, that's not acceptable. Uh, there's no real plan with details. There's no elevations provided, there's no developer identified. The plan does not account for the future widening of four oh five. And we do hope that that will, future, it will be widened. They'd have to take out one of those townhomes if you look at the proximity. So it kinda looks like a setup here. They hired the engineering firm that the city hired to already do the comprehensive plan. Then they squeezed in the maximum number of units that could possibly do. They applied for rezoning, and that's going to increase the resale value of the property. And then they flipped the property. I think our residents have caught on to this by now. This is kind of not what we want our community to be. So one of the things I learned from a real estate attorney was, when you bought, what you bought is what you bought. So what you bought, when you bought, is what you bought. They knew what this was when they had this property. Why do they come now and ask for a rezoning? There is no obligation, there is no legal obligation for this city to change the zoning. They can build on this land, they maybe just can't make as much money. But that's not our problem, it's to help them make money. Our problem is to create a better community. I don't think tiny homes are a good fit for this property. I don't think they should be approved unless there's a benefit to the city. And that's part of the comprehensive plan. Things that develop here should have a benefit to the city. And so I ask you, what benefit is this to the city? The benefit is to this developer. Please deny this application.
Next card, Lori.
Kathleen O'Rourke. Hello, Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, and I'm a Titusville resident. And I wanna talk a little bit about the market demand analysis, which, um, the city actually requires the applicant to do, and as far as I can see, that did not actually happen. Aside from the issues I'm gonna present below, it seems apparent to me that when an applicant does not follow the required procedure, this individual shows a serious lack of respect to the city and the current residents in the area. Additionally, the applicant has, as Vicki said, not even identified a clearly defined project or a builder. So what are the problems requesting a small-scale amendment without completing the market analysis? First of all, multi-family units are being proposed, but maybe they're not actually in demand. The overall housing unit vacancy rate that I found from Titusville is about seventeen point seven percent. That's pretty high relative to other markets. That means that nearly one in five housing units are not occupied. This proposed area is already surrounded by eight large existing developments that are not fully occupied. According to the city of Titusville website, there are over eighteen hundred new units already in review or being built in Titusville. Without a thorough and comprehensive market and demand analysis, the applicant is put in the P and Z in a difficult position on making a decision on a proposal without the information they need. One serious risk of not doing the analysis is it can be a mismatch between supply and demand, leading to overbuilding, underbuilding, or a situation where properties sit vacant for years. A proper study would show who's moving in and out of the community. Building apartments in a market already, um, I'm sorry, I lost a word. Already saturated, yes, with multifamily units can leave new buildings half-empty while failing to meet demands for the homes family want. If buildings remain vacant, this can impact on nearby property values, wasted resources, and unnecessary ecological disruption. The lack of a market demand analysis can result in poor planning and ineffective land use. In addition, there's a greater risk of misguided design choices, improper mix of choices, and potentially zoning and permitting issues. Furthermore, approval of this application without this analysis can result in community backlash and a loss of trust from the residents. Thus, I recommend that this current application be denied, as at this point it is speculative and not based on the type of data needed to enable informed decisions and responsible decision makings. We request that this accurate market demand analysis be conducted by the applicant in accordance with the Titusville Land Development Regulations, and any rezoning be delayed pending receipt of this analysis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For staff, is, is it a requirement that the market analysis be submitted with the application?
So, so the language is, to the, the extent to which the amendment resulted in a positive market and economic and physical benefits of the area as demonstrated through a market demand analysis, economic impact analysis, and physical impact analysis. I, I can tell you that this isn't something that's typically provided with our SSA applications. So.
But is what you're reading from a requirement for an SSA application?
That's part of the, um, comprehensive plan analysis criteria.
Ember Face.
Yeah, so there are some parts that are, that are missing, um, when it comes to SSA. For example, she, she used the word speculative, and I was like, okay, this is kinda speculative. Because we're not used to seeing a SSA, at least I'm not, that's so light in details. When they was asking, you know, what is the average price per unit? The answer was, well, we don't know, we haven't gotten there yet. We have talked about building, we don't know, we haven't gotten there yet. We don't know, we haven't gotten there yet. And so my question, in which I just Googled, and I'll read it to you. You know, what is the risk of approving a small-scale amendment in Florida, but it developed, but the development never happens? Now that rezoning has taken place, development hasn't happened. A small scale has been applied to that property. But again, like I said, development never happens. Um, you know, right now, the housing market in Florida is, is going down. You know, I'm in school, so I read an article today in class that talked about the work from home. Zoom town is decreasing now, and people are being stuck with properties that are no longer sellable, because the housing market is closing down. So, um, I, I do have a concern that if a small-scale amendment was to be approved, developments never happen, we have eighteen hundred on the books right now that won't happen. Not saying that you guys will or will not build, not about that, right? But what if funding does fall through? Um, that small-scale amendment has been applied to that property now, so what then happens?
So the small-scale amendment, um, with this application is part of a PD master plan. So any future development would have to be consistent with this approved master plan regardless of the property owner.
Okay.
So does that mean the SSA goes away if the PD goes away? Or vice versa?
No, it's kind of a package deal, so, um, it, I mean, in order to deviate from the proposed master plan substantially, uh, I do some type, type of different development, whether that be single-family. Um, they would need to come back for a rezoning and an amendment as well.
Good to know, thank you. Next card.
Laura Lee Thompson.
Laura Lee Thompson, Memes, Florida. Um, the pictures that I just gave you include the St. John's Street basin map, the flooding that was still occurring in the Baker subdivision and Temple Drive a full week after Hurricane Ian, and the freshwater flowing into the river at the St. John's Street outfall after a simple cold front with rain passed through in January twenty twenty-four. To be functional, wetlands must have an upland border. Stormwater going into the wetlands is reduced by trees within their borders, because trees absorb tremendous amounts of rain. When trees are removed, the water they absorbed has to go somewhere. The wetlands that will be impacted by this proposed development are unique to Titusville. No other municipality in Brevard County has anything like them. And they're critical for mitigating flooding for the neighborhoods that border them. These wetlands, which are within the St. John's River floodplain, have been draining into the Indian River for decades. Removal of trees around their borders will significantly increase stormwater that goes into the wetlands, which drain to Lake Morbeka, then go through underground pipes to the Indian River. When there's more water to drain than the pipes can handle, which is happening more and more often, the water backs up and low-lying neighborhoods near the wetlands flood. This ongoing problem is worsening due to the annual rise in rainfall due to climate change. Approval of this amendment will set a precedent for a sprawl development pattern of similar fifty-foot complexes and increased density along the boundaries of all of these wetlands. With the exception of one apartment complex, all development in this area is single-family residential, including Fox Lake Hammock, which was referred to multiple times in your packet as an indicator of the trend towards residential development in the general area. This is not the right place for fifty-foot-high buildings with their increased density and impervious surfaces. Buildings of that stature are completely incompatible with surrounding developments where there are zero buildings of that height or of forty feet height. The city has received a half-million-dollar grant from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to do a feasibility study on how to reduce the amount of fresh water that flows from these wetlands into the Indian River. The city is also conducting a vulnerability assessment to determine where flooding is occurring. We need time to understand where the problems lie and to craft solutions before we add to the problem by allowing high-density development along the State Road four oh five corridor. No market analysis has been done either by the city or the applicant to indicate that fifty-foot townhomes are needed at this location. We can't just treat these wetlands like they're cleared cow pastures. Please say no to small-scale amendment application number two dash twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card.
Stan Johnston.
My name, excuse me, my name is Stan Johnston, I'm a professional engineer. And I've been, my, I've got five generations of Johnsons here, and five generations of my wife's side. And so we've been here for a while, and actually, you've been here longer than I have. I came to you earlier, and I told you about my mission to corruption in the city of Titusville. And what you see here is an example of corruption. Now, let me tell you what the corruption is here. It's the same thing what I just told you. Water flows downhill. This is not their, their engineer's fault. It's right here, city of Titusville. See this book right here? This is what I talked about. This is applicable, still current, nineteen sixty-six Stormwater Master Plan of Greater Titusville. I've had this for years and years and years. In two thousand twelve, I went and visited the engineer who was in charge of this Stormwater Master Plan. For years, he had never seen it. Never. So what I did recently is that, knowing that these people right here in our planning department don't look at it, I bought them a copy of this and gave it to Brad and them to use. Are they using it? No. None of this project has been reviewed by this. The shocking thing is, is that right here is a very important place in this vicinity where the water is shown to go to the St. John's River. In fact, is, before nineteen sixty-six, this, this canal has been constructed, maybe in the nineteen thirties and so forth, that goes through there, and it drains it to the St. John's River, what Mrs. Thompson was talking about. So what I have done, here's what I've done, I've come to you. I'm not saying to you, deny it, or accept it, or table it. I'm, I'm asking for a condition. I'll give it to, uh, Mr. Hand. I used to live in his trailer park. And here's what the condition says. This has to do with the city of Titusville Planning Department, Engineering Department. I told you before, what they do, is they do something, they don't, they don't name any engineers. No engineer, okay, so I'm saying, condition is, a named city professional engineer shall report on this project as to whether this project conforms to requirements of city's nineteen sixty-six Stormwater Master Plan. It's this document. Especially the requirement that this project drains to the St. John's River. That's not a difficult thing to ask. In other words, I'm asking you to put on whatever you rec, whatever you choose, or even if you deny it, to put on there a condition for this project to be reviewed that way. That's all. Questions? That's a crazy thing to, thank you for what Mr. Face had, I think, I think he was very good, what, what he added just recently. Any questions? There's gotta be some questions.
For the staff.
Ember Face.
So do we, does, I know that he has nineteen sixty, seventy-six?
Sixty-six.
Nineteen sixty-six Stormwater Master Plan. Does the city still have a master, Stormwater Master Plan?
I personally don't have that information at this time.
Okay.
Wonderful, it's not surprising.
So if we don't have one, then they can't?
Oh yeah, you do, you have it. I know, I, I hand-delivered it to Bradley.
Well, we gotta find out.
I paid for it. They have it.
She should have a good answer to that question, because that's, 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 that's a big thing, big issue. That's why I'm wearing this shirt FEMA. No questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. More cards, Lori?
No more cards.
Alright, um, applicant rebuttal opportunity?
Alright, I tried to take good notes, if I don't know how well I did, so that I can answer some of the questions that were raised. I, I think I wanna start out by saying, you know, this project offers an affordable alternative as single-family housing. So it's not rental, it's not multifamily, it's fee-simple ownership for folks that might not be able to afford a two-thousand-square-foot home. Oh, I thought it was, can you, can you hear me now? Okay, now? Alright, so what I said was, um, this project is a fee-simple ownership of townhomes, an alternative to affordable single-family housing. That's what it is. In many of our jurisdictions, this one included, that's an issue. People want home ownership, it's just out of reach. This would make it attainable for sixty-two families. In order to obtain the required permits, the project has to take into consideration- In order to obtain the required permits, the project has to take into consideration pre and post-stormwater runoff. So several of the questions had to do with that. Well, what about the existing oncoming stormwater onto this property? Whatever volume is currently running onto this property is part of the after calculation. So regardless of how much impervious surface is added with this project, it plus the existing current runoff onto the property from all of those other subdivisions that either didn't take it into account when they were built, or alternatively, as the first speaker said, infrastructure affecting it adversely. And that is not the applicant or any property owner's responsibility. If there's infrastructure needs, unless it's part of a homeowners association where dues are paid for that to be upkept, like this one will be, then that's an issue outside of our control. Additionally, we would like to go on the record as saying that we will ensure that the lift station is a minimum of 75 feet away from any water body. It's over that now, and even if it has to be relocated in final design plans, it will maintain a minimum of 75 feet and likely more. Several speakers said that the project was 50 feet in height. We agreed the last time around, we've not changed. We agreed to 40 feet. So for the record, 40, not 50. With respect to conservation areas and wetlands, wetlands can be seen as a subset of conservation areas. So some of you mentioned it, maybe I'm hoping a little clearer this way. So you can have a canopy of trees that are considered wetlands depending on the species, or you can have lower scrub materials or scrub vegetation also considered concert, wetlands. Conservation simply means the type of property put in protection under an agreement that is generally recorded so that that property cannot be developed. This project increases the amount of conservation area by 10 acres. 10 acres. 76 acres, 15 developable, five additional set to the side for parks and walkways, et cetera. So 10 acres are really being set aside for development. We are way too early in a process for any developer or any municipality or county to expect full-on drawings. That's just not where it happens. However, the process here is robust. So everything that happens down the road comes again before two hearings, this one and the commission. So you get another bite at the apple. All of the folks here and more get another bite at the apple. As was explained during the community meeting, anybody in this room can ask the St. John's to be copied on any and all correspondence about this project or any other project for that matter that they're interested in, and they'll add them to that list. So even if we diverge and something goes to the St. John's that's not required to go to the city, unlikely, but if that were to happen, any interested citizen can ask, hey, I live in the area and I'd like to be copied on everything and anything for the project located at fill-in-the-blank. You'll get it. It happens. It's a good way to follow things next to you or down the street from you or what have you. We've worked really hard to address the other concerns that were brought up a year ago. We took an entire year to do it. We went back to the community. We offered a full community meeting. It was with areas, we had the stormwater engineer there, we had the traffic engineer there. All those studies were updated. We can't get further with that data until we get further with the project. We want to work with the city. We want to be good neighbors. We want to do it right. If you have any other questions, I'd like to answer them for you.
Amber Seidler.
Thank you. You, I asked you what the proposed or the, the price point was, and you couldn't give me that answer. But then you just said that the affordable housing fee-simple ownership townhomes. What is, what do you consider affordable housing when you're building? And how did you determine that Titusville? What is affordable in Titusville?
Okay, there's a, there's a formula that you apply when you're doing affordable housing. There's also another category called workforce housing. So it has to do with, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, and so I'd be lying if I made it up for you. But it has to do with the median income. It also has to do with salaries. And then it also has to do with housing type. And those, those numbers, and it also has to do not only with the local, but then it goes out a little further. So here is Titusville. What's it look like here? And then the numbers that are applied. Okay, well, what's it look like going out a little further, entire, all of Brevard County? And then those numbers reduced to what would be considered so affordable housing in Titusville will differ from what affordable housing, you know, in Bithlo is, or Christmas, or Orlando, or Melbourne. They'll all be different because of those numbers. And there's a table, and I, I don't have it in front of me. I apologize.
Amber Face.
So I'll help you. So it's 64,000, almost 65,000 dollars a year. It's been up. It's up substantially because a few years ago, it was in the 50s. So now it's 64,000, 65,000 annually. And then so what you do is you do some math with that. And so what they consider to be very, very low income is 30% of that. So if you make 30% of that, then that's considered to be very low. What they consider to be average or workforce housing is going to be 80 to 130% of that. So if you do the math, you do anywhere between 80% of 54,000 to 130% of that. That's considered to be workforce housing income. And so that's, I'm just answering the income.
I appreciate it.
Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Any other questions? If not, I will close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and bring it back to the commission. Any discussion? Anyone care? Amber Seidler.
Thank you. I just want to point out one thing on page, what is this, 28, I believe, of the staff comments. And it is, has to do with the infrastructure connectivity and reducing the need for increased public costs or earlier public costs. And if you go down to line 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, it does say here from staff that there may be a significant demand on city resources if potable water is used for irrigation. Sustainable landscape or alternative irrigation methods could be utilized to reduce potential impacts on the city's potable water supply. So I'm just concerned they're concerned, and so I'm just wondering where we start seeing that addressed, if it's here. How do we address it?
So that information will be addressed during the site plan process? Site plan process and full engineering on the project?
Amber Childs.
You know, I remember this from a year ago. And, and, but what were the, can you remind me what the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended?
Yes, so there were, there were two additional conditions recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission at that time. Building height no greater than 40 feet. And then number two, allow the Forest Hill Baptist Church to access their proposed driveway at the Singleton Avenue intersection if possible. So that's the language that was approved.
And I don't, I don't know that, like, many situations have really changed as far as the flooding. But we definitely, everyone who sits on a board or city council or state, state position, they get questions about flooding daily, you know? And so it's something that is in the front of our minds a lot recently. And, and it's really tough to like go through some, you know, something like this to zone it. And it may not be, you know, the person who owns the property that you want to develop. But it's probably the city's fault, you know, in this, in certain cases, especially we already have flooding in the neighborhood that's directly to the south of this property. And maybe there's some stormwater ducts that need to be cleaned out. Because I mean, it happens right by my house. It's a little storm duct. And from my house, I have, I have, some of my lawn just, you know, some of the dirt from my lawn just goes to the sewer. It goes right there. And it's just a little stormwater pond, but it goes through there and it gets clogged up. Now, the city comes out sometime, it's come out at least once and cleared that out and stuff. But I think we have a problem we need to address before we continue to exacerbate the problem. And I'm, you know, it's unfortunate that that's where we're at right now. But I don't, I just don't, you know, it's no fault of the people who built, you know, 50 years, you know, in 1950s. As my kids would say, the 1900s, which makes it sound even further back. It makes me feel, you know, feel really old. But so it's not their fault. It is not the people who bought the property's fault either. But, you know, I think what the city could help with is what are we doing for, to solve this issue so we don't have, like, you know, we don't have these rezonings and we have to say, look, what's, you know, we, I know it's not your fault, the flooding's not your fault. And, but what are we gonna do? You know, we can't just keep, you know, approving things and, and ignore the problem. So I think this is more of, it's not the applicant's issue, but it is the city's issue of what are we doing for this flooding so we can move forward with, you know, developing in a responsible way? So that's my issue and two cents about it.
Any other comments?
There's a lot going on with this, with this, with this here. Because again, we're only brought, the only action before us, right, is just do we basically yea or nay to the PD, not necessarily to their plans. Their plans is just preliminary, giving us an idea of what they want to do with it, but not necessarily what they are going to do with it. And so that's not really what we are voting on today, is 62 units. 62 units is just hypothetical, okay? Reality is they can put as many, as many as can fit there, to be honest with you, right?
I don't believe so, since it's a PD, right? Am I correct on that?
But no, I'm gonna say whatever, whatever they're allowable to have, I don't know what that number is. I'm not saying you can put 100 out there. I'm not saying that. I'm saying whatever you guys are allowable to do, you're gonna put that many out there. That's, that's all. But that's not our concern. That's not what's before us, right? What's before us is, do we say yea or nay to building something in a PD on that property? Understanding that yea means you have these potential issues, nay means you won't. And that's all that's before. So I'm conflicted, to be honest with you. You know, as I said, I think about it. Because we, our last member that's not with us anymore, he wanted a property this size. He wanted something that was six to eight hundred square feet. And that doesn't exist in this community.
And I have an economic, you know, background on the business side and, and the city needs the tax revenue to be able to do the corrections that we're talking about as well. So it's, it's a bit of a double-edged sword, and I share your conflicts.
Yeah.
That, whether you do, do or you don't.
Yeah. And, and you know, but, but the other part of that goes back to that report that says that our infrastructure can handle more growth. And then so we have that before us, and then we see that the current situation doesn't even, we can't even handle what we currently have. And then you want to put more on top of that. You know what I mean? And it's just, it's not, it's no fault to y'all, not at all, right? Rain's gonna happen, you know, things are gonna happen. But, you know, so anyways, I'm just, I'm just, as I sit here, I'm pondering the right thing to do for the city of Titusville and for those residents. But sometimes residents, sometimes, you know, you own a lake and it floods. Whether they build or not, your lake still floods. Okay, so that's not their fault if your lake floods. It just, it just does. When it rains a lot, it floods. The river floods. It's not, it's not their fault that your place floods. God, you know, God makes it rain. So I'm, anyways, I'm just, I'm just conflicted. That's all.
I'd just like to make a comment. So the property is permitted by right to develop 16 single-family homes. And I think the majority of the issues that have been discussed here tonight would still be in place even with that type of development. So I just wanted to point that out.
That, that's what I mean. I mean, it's not their development, making the problem worse, except for the lift station being next to the water, should it go out? That, that'll be their problem. And the safety part. But them merely building is not the problem. You know, that's, that's what I'm trying to say. Them merely building is not the problem. So.
Amber Seidler.
Thank you. I think the engineering models that you guys are, that are used and presented to us, those are engineering models versus what we're seeing in our neighborhoods firsthand experience. They are, we've got localized flooding that kind of suggests that the, they're not aligning with the projections, what, what they're coming out with. And we're saying we have enough, we have the ability to sustain the growth. But what we're seeing is that they say we are, but we're experiencing we're not. And so when those conflict and we're asked to, to vote on something when everybody, they meet the criteria because they check the boxes, it's a tough spot. So.
Amber Scottley.
I just want to clarify, the last time this came forth, a year ago, this passed unanimously, correct?
No.
No? Four to three.
The comprehensive plan amendment passed unanimously and the rezoning and master plan approval was approved by a vote four to three.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I saw your region.
I was just gonna say, when the, the young lady came up, just not the attorney, right, the attorney. And she mentioned, she said, you know, that they took the time to do what was asked of them a year ago. They made the changes, that they're willing to work with the city. And then it was also mentioned that, kind of almost definitively, like, we will work. And then the gentleman before, I believe the civil engineer stated that, you know, to trust their plan or have faith in their plan and things of that nature. And I kind of agree with Amber Faceon, kind of conflicted here because there's a lot of, it's a lot of information that's being given, of course, and I wasn't on the board a year ago. So this is definitely something new for me. And then, of course, hearing the residents and their concerns and things of that nature. So we really have, you know, some, a decision to make tonight. But I think, I guess my question still remains about, you know, what happens with the flooding, you know? How do we correct that? What provisions can we put in place? How can we, who do we hold accountable for those things that happen? If it's passed or if it's not passed, if there's conditions? So I guess, I guess, are there alternatives to what we're being asked to vote on tonight?
Amber Chapman.
Yeah, so, exactly. There's a lot going on here. I would like to try and bring us back, like Mr. Faceon said, we're here. We're here, you know, the ordinance, we've got a legislative item, right? Correct? And we have a quasi-judicial item, right?
That's correct.
All right. So the legislative item is the one that we can all discuss.
The land use.
Right. And then the quasi-judicial, that one's a little hard press, I guess, depending on, do they meet the checkboxes? Do they meet what is law required by city ordinance? Things of that nature. That, that's the two separatenesses there. The only issue that we have is our ordinances and our code is all interpretation-based instead of hierarchy-based, so to speak. Because everything you go, this place shall be single-family. This place, you know, this zoning shall be multifamily. We have a lot of issues with our ordinances that contradict, I think, areas, and that's where the heartache is. So I just want to bring us back to the legislative and the quasi-judicial. So I just want to bring us back to the legislative and the, uh, quasi-judicial and, and how we approach those two, is.
Member Faeser.
I'll make a motion whenever you're ready.
Um, does anyone else have anything before we get a motion, you can always second up for discussion, so motion away.
Alrighty, I'm, I move that we approve the small-scale amendment, application number two dash two zero two four, State Route four oh five and Singleton Avenue, PD use, uh, PD South.
Is this where we, the one that requires conditions or the next one?
So we'll need, um, two, two separate motions, one for the land use, um, and then one for the rezoning and master plan.
Alright, so for the land use, I would also ask that you let us know whether or not we have a stormwater, um, master plan? And if we do, make sure that they, that their plan aligns with our stormwater master plan, if we should have one? That'll be the only condition that I ask. And so we'll take it one by, one by one usually, so.
And so does the height condition and the driveway condition, is that on the zoning or the?
That would be under the rezoning ordinance. I, I believe that the, this would as well, so the, the Comprehensive Plan is, is just pertaining to the land use amendment. And then all of the other conditions would be tied to the rezoning ordinance. So any type of conditions that you want to place would be under the rezoning vote.
Okay.
Alright, second, uh, alright, Member Troutman, seconds? Roll call vote, please, well, any discussion first? Alright, roll call vote, please Lori.
Member Scully?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Childs?
No.
Member Gellin?
Yes.
Secretary Grant?
Yes.
Member Troutman?
Yes.
Member Faeser?
Yes.
Chairman Aton?
Yes. Alright, Member Faeser, you're doing such a good job with your motions, you want to take number two?
Alrighty, so, uh, again, well, um, I move to approve the small-scale amendment, SSA application number two dash two zero two four, State Route four oh five, Singleton Avenue, PD South, uh, with the, um, stipulations of the checking, this is a stormwater master plan, make sure that they, uh, abide by that. The fifty-foot height and no more than, go ahead.
To the forty-foot maximum?
I'm sorry, forty-foot max height, I'm, I'm sorry, thank you. And then no more than sixty-two units.
That, that would be a given based on the master plan and the ordinance.
Okay.
And, and the access road?
Oh, yes, and that the church can use the access road.
Alright, and were there also staff conditions requested as well?
Yes, the recommended staff conditions, one through five.
Alright, yes, and let's go ahead and add those staff recommendations, one through five.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
Any discussion before vote? Alright, well, Lori, please.
Secretary Grant?
Uh, yes, I'm in favor of seeing the process.
Member Troutman?
Yes.
Member Faeser?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Childs?
No.
Member Scully?
Yes.
Member Gellin?
Yes.
Chairman Aton?
Yes.
Can't put my, yeah. So for the land use, I, I think, um, there will be impact on conservation, I know it's growing it, but I think there's going to be impact whether they want it or not, and as far as the zoning, I don't think it matches the surrounding area.
Alright, and this will come before council, when?
This will be before council on November eleventh. Clarification, so the first reading will be on the twenty-eighth, and then the public hearing will be on the eleventh.
Okay, thank you.
The first reading will be held at the city council on October twenty-eighth, and the public hearing will be held on November eleventh. We, we don't advertise the first reading, it would, we're only required to advertise the, the public hearing.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next item of business is item nine B. Don't have a lot of detail here, but, uh, cancel, it reads cancel December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five commission meeting. Is that a staff? Do you need any explanation, or is this just, we move and?
I'm not sure if that was due to scheduling purposes, or if that, we, we didn't have anything on the, the agenda, but I have a feeling it might have been due to some scheduling issues.
I'm assuming it's because of the holidays, that, uh, they, they, uh, a lack of, uh, attendance was, was a concern. Uh, I certainly am fine with it, although I do think I'll be in town then, but, uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that, that we, uh, yeah, cancel our December seventeenth mission, uh, meet, meeting. Mission, mission meeting.
We have a second? What, you don't like our meetings? Really? Nice.
Can we cancel more? Alright.
Uh, moved and seconded, roll call vote, I guess Lori.
Member Faeser?
Yes.
Member Gellin?
Yes.
Member Troutman?
Yes.
Member Scully?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Childs?
Yes.
Secretary Grant?
Yes.
Chairman Aton?
Yes. Alright, um, this is, uh, item ten on the agenda is our second opportunity for petitions and requests from the public present. Anyone? You're still here, Stan, you want to talk to us again or not? Oh, you only get one try, okay, alright, sorry. Alright. Uh, so, next, uh, city staff report.
There are no city staff reports.
And there's no city attorney presence, I assume there's no report from the city attorney? I have no report? Any of the members have anything to report? Alright, nice tune. Alright, six. Uh, seeing none, we will stand adjourned.